All right. Good evening and welcome to the February 12, February 17, 2022, meeting of the Baltimore County Planning Board. It is now called to order. I'm Nancy Hafford, the Chair of the Board, and now we will start the meeting with a roll call to account for the board members that are present. When you hear your name, please say aye. Mr. Schweitzer.
Aye.
Ms. Panero. Mr. Halepka.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Ms. Wolfson.
Aye.
Mr. McGinnis.
Aye.
Mr. Heckman.
Aye.
Mr. Heinel.
Aye.
Mr. Pirlo.
Aye.
Mr. Warren.
Aye.
Mr. Caligari. Mr. Fotus. Mr. Avery.
Aye.
Ms. German.
Aye.
Thank you all, and please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you all. Ms. Tracy, is there any changes to the agenda that's been published?
Madam Chair, no changes.
Thank you. In the February 11 email, you received draft minutes from the February 3, 2022 meeting. Has everyone had an opportunity to read the minutes? Are there any corrections or additions? If not, can I entertain a motion to accept the minutes as published?
Motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. This evening, we have an opportunity for further discussion and then a vote on the Basic Service Maps, which is introduced to the Board on January 20, 2022. A public hearing was conducted on February 3, 2022. Staff from the Department of Public Works and Transportation are here to answer any further questions that our Board might have. Before we take a vote, would Mrs. McKenna Sterily from the Department of Public Works and Transportation like to add anything further?
I know I don't have anything else to add tonight, just here to answer any questions.
Thank you so much. Board members, are there any questions?
My only question, there was some talk, or we did some work probably, I don't know, five months ago or so on, in addition to the sewer lines that were going to go through the quarry on the east side, is that included anywhere in this?
Good evening, this is David Bayer. Now, there's nothing included on this at the quarry area.
Okay.
Are there any further questions on the Basic Service Maps? If not, can I entertain a motion?
Sure. Be it moved that the Baltimore County Planning Board recommends the adoption by the County Council of the 2022 Basic Services Map for Public Water, Public Sewage, and Transportation for the memoranda as submitted by the Director of the Department of Public Works and Transportation at the January 20, 2022 Planning Board Meeting.
I have a second.
Second.
Thank you, but I'm going to call a roll call now to make sure we get everybody's vote. Mr. Schweitzer, yea, nay, or abstain?
Yea.
Ms. Panero.
Yea.
Mr. Halepka.
Yes.
Mr. Johnson.
Yea.
Ms. Wolfson.
Yea.
Mr. McGinnis.
Yea.
Mr. Heckman.
Yea.
Mr. Heinel.
Yea.
Mr. Pirlo.
Yea.
Mr. Warren.
Yea.
Mr. Caligari. Mr. Fotus. Mr. Avery.
Yea.
Ms. German.
Yea.
Thank you all. Motion carries. Ms. Bensley will fill us in on the report from the February 10, 2022 meeting of the Landmark Preservation Commission.
Thank you, Madam Chair. At its February 10, 2022 meeting, the Landmarks Preservation Commission voted to issue eight certificates of appropriateness for the following properties: Chatsworth, the Ross property at 21 West Chatsworth Avenue in Reisterstown; 532 St. Martin's LLC property at 3610 Stony Brook Road in Fieldstone; the Bear property at 4607 Prospect Avenue in Glendon; the Mond property at 1554 South Rolling Road in Relay; the Wolf Adorian property at 623 Dunkirk Road in Annesley; the Kecken property at 3605 Fieldstone Road in Fieldstone; the Christopolis property at 1549 South Rolling Road in Relay; and the Marx and Discory property at 507 Sudbrook Lane in Sudbrook Park. Additionally, the Commission voted to issue one notice to proceed for the Karis property at 504 Sudbrook Lane in Sudbrook Park, and that concludes the report.
Thank you, Ms. Bensley. Ms. Tracy will now fill us in on legislation recently passed by the County Council following our last meeting. Ms. Tracy?
Thank you, Madam Chair, members of the Board. Since our last meeting, the Council adopted Resolution 3-22, Adoption of the Baltimore County Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan. A resolution to adopt the Baltimore County Multi-Hazard Mitigation Plan, the Federal Disaster Mitigation Act of 2000, requires the county to have an approved multi-hazard mitigation plan in order to participate in certain federally funded programs. The plan is available in its entirety on the County Council website. That ends the report.
Thank you, Ms. Tracy. This is the conclusion of our agenda. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries, but we will reconvene at 5 o'clock. Stay on the same WebEx. So I'll see you back here at 5 o'clock for our public hearing. Thank you all.
Aye.
And then Nancy, do you know, does the CIP Subcommittee come right after the public hearing?
Yes, it does, and it's all in the same WebEx, so none of us tap out of this.
No, no, I just like, I didn't see a time down for that one, so I just wasn't sure what, so.
Yeah, we're going to hold it immediately following the public hearing.
Okay. But will they be like, you know, I see that there is an official adjournment of the public hearing, so.
There will be. But you have 20 minutes to move around.
Hey Howard.
Uh huh.
Is that, is that a, is that Gary Huddles on your back wall? The picture, who is, who's that a likeness of, or is that you as a young man?
That's me as a young man with my blonde wife at that time.
Okay.
Well.
Yeah. Yeah, I thought, is that Gary Huddles? That's who it looked like, too. The hair was pretty.
That was the first campaign I ever worked on.
On Huddles?
Yeah, it was our district in Pikeville.
Yep.
And I forgot how I met him, and I was probably 18 or 19.
Oh, cool. That's a great age to get involved, yeah. That's funny.
I mean, Dutch, Dutch always says that I was the first guy that supported him, you know, so. Been in the county a long time.
Yeah, and I know you've been around, made a lot of contributions. Everything else good?
Yeah, I mean, he just, he made a major favor of my daughter's wedding, which was in October. We couldn't do it in Israel where we were planning to, so to get my Israeli relatives here, a newborn baby didn't have her visa yet. The kids are, all the kids are American citizens, but he pulled it off, I mean, he and his Chief of Staff Tara, I mean.
Yeah, that's great. That must have been pretty exciting then to have your relatives from Israel join you, too.
Yeah, it was good. It was almost right in between when things weren't too bad, and we had it outdoors, so it worked out very nicely on a farm, Hidden Waters Farm, so.
And Hidden Waters, one of my favorite places. Of course, it's getting changed around, too, now, and there are a lot of development right next to it.
Yeah, well, my client, Tom Baum, had bought it. 25 lots are going to be built by Caruso, and the rest of it, he's going to run as an organic farm, 110 acres, so most of it'll stay.
Yeah, I heard him at the Pikeville-Greenspring Community Council meeting describe what his plans were, and that's pretty darn impressive. That's cool, because that's such a better way to protect it. I, when I worked for Howard County, I would always come home Old Court if I could, and always loved that stretch of road, because it was so idyllic. I know, sort of out of character for every place else, but, you know, it was just nice to hit that little stretch.
Yeah, so, but he wants to put a little, you know, fruit stand there or whatever to sell some corn and some other stuff. The guy that he's got running it comes from a farm out in Reisterstown, and he grows stuff there, and, you know, the corn stand over at Falls Road and an old court there right by 83, that always does, oh, so he thinks that, you know, that, and maybe someday he'll sell some of the beef and some of the stuff that he wants to do, so.
Do you know if all those lots are spoken for, Howard?
No, not of them are yet. They're not ready to talk to anybody yet. While you. I can put you on my list.
Not for me personally, but I live five minutes away.
Yeah, no, they're not going to open it up for sale till sometime in the summer, I was told.
Well, that's, that's actually.
At work, I settled it when they bought it, but.
Nice, nice. I didn't realize it was that many lots.
It's 23 or 24, I think.
Yeah, that's a good amount.
Well, on small lots, the back, the whole forest buffer where the deer tend to hang, we'll say, and it's sort of clustered up towards Old Court Road.
Got it, yeah. Keep the Beltway noise away and get a nice view across the farm.
Yeah, yeah, absolutely.
So does the University Foundation still own Hidden Waters itself?
They still own the house. They have about nine acres, I think, and that will remain with them, although the Chancellor doesn't want to live there for the present.
Yeah, I went there both with Corret and with Britt, for a number of parties, beautiful place, so.
I was there for another party. Gary Appen threw there one time, and interestingly, you know, I used it for the wedding, but, because Tom let me, but maybe 25 years ago, I had thrown a very large company crab feast on the big area open up to the left of it.
Yep.
I knew the place pretty well. I installed electric for them on, you know, so they'd have electric for that field.
It's quite a place, quite a place.
Actually, Tom wants to do a lot of educational stuff, too, with a lot of the schools and all, wants to bring them into, you know, sort of like Pearlstone, and we introduced them to Pearlstone out in Reisterstown to do some joint stuff together, so.
That'd be great.
Yeah.
Yeah, because Pearlstone's pretty much of a height to get out there. I mean, it's a beautiful facility, but, you know, you really have to know where you're going to find it, actually. So having almost like a co-partner that's on Old Court where you can draw from Pikeville-Greenspring and.
You know, the city.
City, I mean, yeah, that'd be great.
Some of us Jewish boys know where Milldale was, that's why.
Is that what it was before, Camp Milldale?
Yeah. Many years, I bet you, 50 years.
Yeah, well, I'm not a Jewish boy from Baltimore, so I couldn't help, I couldn't help anybody find their way there with.
I can show you some camp pictures. I've got my cabin pictures if you want to see them.
Good stuff. Good stuff, yeah. Hi, Mr. Keller. You're on mute, Richard, but, boy, you even have a tie on for us, man. I am so impressed.
I just gave away 40 ties.
Figured I'd fancy up today. Hey, okay, you dress up real good, buddy. I try. It's all I can do, Steve.
I think we all need our haircuts, that's all, you know.
That's one nice thing about being a woman, you can just pull it up from behind.
Hmm. And we don't have to spend as much in the beauty parlor as you all do.
Well, I spend a whole lot on my dog's hair, too.
Howard, are you being bad?
Me?
Mr. Avery, how are things going for you, Peter?
Well, you know, hanging in there like everyone else, Madam Chair, just taking one day at a time. Every day that I get up in the morning is a good day.
Amen.
The rest of the things, I can worry about, those things later.
Totally agreed. And it was a beautiful day today.
It was. It's a beautiful day.
Wayne, are you on?
Yes.
So, since it's been so cold, has it been affected your crops at all? Or, no, you're just, this can happen, and it's not a big deal, because, boy, it seems to me like this is the coldest winter we've ever had.
Well, we have to feed our cattle for the winter, but they're starting to cab this week, so the weather, nice weather's been very good for that.
Oh, good.
Now, this time of year, we are hauling away some of the soybeans and corn haul into the mills, so it can be converted into chicken feed, so you can buy some chicken at the store.
We need some chicken in the stores, that's for sure.
Amen.
Yeah, it's been a very mild winter. I've had, one, we used to cab around January 1, and one year we had six foot of snow. And I, it was a challenge to get the cows fed, and after that, I said, well, we're going to switch to later in the winter before we start caving. So ever since then, we've never had a real day of snow, so as you would figure.
How do you plan that? Oh, maybe we shouldn't talk about that now.
No, you have a chart on what time you let the bulls in and when they're going to start calving.
Oh.
Go by a chart. And then we withdraw the bulls in, say, end of June or first, first part of July, so we shorten the calving season, so we don't have stragglers, because the ones born real late, then they're not really paying for their way.
How many cattle do you have?
70 cows and 15 heifers, young heifers. And so they'll be, they'll expect the best, should get high 60s of cows that can, will cab successfully. Now, you talk about those deer running around. We consider them big rats that don't have a fence to keep them in. But unfortunately, there are people that are willing to come out and pay us to shoot them. Yeah, they're always running into fences and causing problems.
You have as many hunters as they used to have?
Oh, yeah. We have a lot of inquiries, even from Pennsylvania come down here, they, we always have a list of people wanting, want to hunt.
Now, since you, since yours is private property, do you still have to follow the deer season, or can you do it whenever?
Well, yes, we could ourselves if they're into the crops, and they will, they will damage the crops, so we do have a right to do that. But I don't do it. I don't hunt myself. One year, I had a 10-acre field of soybeans, and I looked at them about August, and they, they were about, they looked pretty good. Time I pulled in there to combine, there was not enough in the field to even, I turned the ground and went back at it. The deer had eaten everything.
Wow.
So they can, they can really hurt you. But we encourage the hunting.
No, I understand.
It's only a couple of months.
Yeah.
I remember one, what was it, about 15 years or 20 years ago, when the deer got into the White House, was able to jump the security fence. Apparently came down the Rock Creek Parkway and made it down to the mall.
Yeah, they get pretty, pretty bold sometimes.
Wayne, it sounded like Scott wanted to visit your farm.
Now, my hunting days are over, too.
I haven't had venison since I was in my 20s.
They go out there at 4 o'clock in the morning, climb up in a tree stand, and sit there all morning, waiting, hoping that a deer will cross in front of them. And, but for somebody, I guess it's, if they've never done that, it might be fun. But for me, I don't consider that fun. Last time I went hunting, I was out there at 5 o'clock, and half hour before daylight, I had about a dozen people come tramping through the woods. Half of them were neighbors that never asked me, and the other half are people I never saw before. So after that, I just least took out, I let somebody else worry about it.
Yeah.
But there are a lot of good people out there that really enjoy it.
Mm hmm. And what do they say, that they estimate that there are more whitetail deer on the East Coast now than when the Europeans first arrived?
Oh, I'm sure of that. And you had bears and everything else that were predators before, before we arrived, so. And the early colonists, that's what their food source was.
But now suburbs are just one big smorgasbord for them.
Yeah, now the suburban people enjoy looking at them.
Until they eat all their flowers.
Yeah.
One of, one of the landmarks issues that we approved was someone was trying to fence off their property, and they wanted to put the fence high enough to try and keep the deer from jumping in.
Better go 20 feet plus.
All right, everybody, we're going to be starting in just a moment, so. Hoping you're all here to join us again.
No chit chat.
Okay, good evening again, and welcome to the Baltimore County Planning Board hearing for the Transfer Station Amendment of the Solid Waste Management Plan. 7600 Rolling Mills Road. The public hearing is now called to order. I'm Nancy Hafford, the Chair of the Baltimore County Planning Board. We will now start with the roll call, and when you hear your names, please say aye. Mr. Schweitzer.
Aye.
Ms. Panero.
Aye.
Mr. Halepka.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Ms. Wolfson.
Aye.
Mr. McGinnis.
Aye.
Mr. Heckman. Mr. Heinel.
Aye.
Mr. Pirlo. Mr. Pirlo.
Aye.
Mr. Warren.
Aye.
Mr. Caligari. Mr. Fotus. Mr. Avery. And Ms. German.
Aye.
At the Baltimore County Planning Board meeting on February third, two thousand and twenty-two, Mr. Richard Kellerman Keller, Baltimore County Department of Public Works and Transportation, introduced the Transfers, Transfer Station Amendment to the Solid Waste Management Plan. Seventy-six-hundred Rolling Road Road. Mr. Keller is here to further present the Transfer, Transfer Station Amendment to the Solid Waste Management Plan. Following Mr. Keller's presentation, members of the public will have an opportunity to speak on behalf of the decision. Please join me in, in welcoming Mr. Keller.
Good evening, and thank you very much for allowing me to present this Transfer Station Amendment to the Baltimore County Ten Year Solid Waste Management Plan. As was just mentioned, I, we introduced this amendment on February third. And I know that there were a number of questions that came up at that meeting and subsequent to that meeting, and we have attempted to answer those in writing. And we will do the same this evening. If there are any questions that you have that, that require some further explanation, we will do that. Can I get the next slide, please? So the Ten Year Solid Waste Management Plan is required by State Code of Maryland Regulations, Section two twenty-six oh-three oh-three. And that solid waste plan is designed to ensure that Baltimore County has a solid waste management strategy in place for at least a ten-year period. And the main requirement is to demonstrate that we have adequate capacity to handle all materials generated within the county for ten years. The Maryland Department of the Environment, where MDE approves plans and plan amendments. And the currently approved plan covers years two thousand and nineteen to two thousand and twenty-eight. Next slide, please. Baltimore County is required to amend its plan to include proposed new solid waste facilities. That is Comar Section twenty-six oh-three oh-three oh-five. And that is the purpose of our being here this evening in cooperation with the Planning Board is to present this amendment to the Solid Waste Management Plan. Next slide, please. The Eagle Transfer Station is a proposed new solid waste acceptance facility located seventy-six-hundred Rolling Mill Road. It will be privately financed and operated. It will accept both municipal solid waste and construction and demolition material from the Baltimore region. The proposal has the accepting material being transferred to disposal sites or recovered for recycling. And about five percent of the material is proposed to be recycled. And the owner anticipates processing approximately one hundred and forty-three thousand tons of material at the facility each year, or about five hundred tons per day. Next slide, please. So once we have conducted the public hearing this evening, we are allowing a thirty-five day period for written comments. It must be received by March twenty-fourth, two thousand and twenty-two. And they need to go to Anthony Russell, Jr., the Acting Deputy Director of Transportation for Public Works and Transportation. And the address and the email are there for comments. Once we have gone through the comment period, we will finalize the Ten Year Plan Amendment language. It will then go to the County Council for review and vote. It would then go to the County Executive for review and sign off. And then it will go to MDE for review and final decision on the proposed amendment. So that is the basics of what happens at a public hearing, having to do with an amendment to the Ten Year Solid Waste Management Plan. And again, thank you for the opportunity to be here this evening, and I'll certainly entertain any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Keller. Does the board have any questions for Mr. Keller? Okay, if not, at this time, I'll call on those of you that have completed, I mean, that have signed up for, to speak this evening. And the first person is Jack Harden. Sir, you hit there? Okay.
Nancy?
Yes.
Okay. There you go. Mr. Harden?
I'm on the phone.
All right, you, you can't speak. Yes.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, this is Jack Hayden. I apologize, technical guilty difficulties. I couldn't get on the WebEx for some reason with my computer at home, so I apologize for that. Thank you for allowing me to make comments. You said you can hear me okay?
Yes.
Excellent. So I'll just follow up with a few things. Don't have a huge presentation. I did send in some items which I think you have available to put up on the screen. One is of the property. It's a picture of the property. And it shows that it's two point two acres. And it's, we've always called it seventy-six-hundred Rolling Mill Road. I wanted to make that point right off the bat. We've got a new address. The whole seven acres was originally known as seventy-six-hundred. We just bought two acres to the left if the slide is up. And we got a new address, and that new address is seventy-five ninety Rolling Mill Road. And we will be amending any of our, well, we're going to amend our LLC document to be known as seventy-nine hundred Rolling Mill Road LLC. And any application changes that we may need to make, we'll make. So I just want to make that point. We're basically going to work out the existing building. It's a hundred and eighty by seventy. It's about thirteen thousand square feet. As Mr. Keller was talking about the process, after these meetings, there's still about six months of things, meetings and votes, et cetera, that go through the county, Baltimore County process. And at the end of that, if approved, it goes to MDE for final permitting, where we go through the process of nuts and bolts with MDE. That process could easily take up to a year, so we're not expecting to be really open realistically. It's not our desire. We'd like to be open sooner, but probably till in the summer of twenty-three. The biggest point I want to make is really who we are and who we represent. I'm a private sector, Baltimore County, trash hauler, and an operator, have been for forty-some years. We live here, we make our money here, we spend our money here, we raise our kids here. And there are several other commercial haulers that are independent, that are the same way, and we have run out of places to dump our trash that aren't controlled by Wall Street companies. There's actually become, in the commercial sector, of commercial trash and commercial construction debris, it's really become a monopoly by the bigger companies, and we wanted a small facility that we could manage ourselves. I run other facilities and have run other facilities, so we're not, it's not new. We know how to do it. And we appreciate very much the community's concerns of being a good neighbor. We feel this is a good, heavy industrial site, very well hidden, surrounded all by industrial. We plan to be a good operator with the facility and to the neighbors and to the surrounding area in general. That's of utmost important to us. Currently run a C and D recycling facility. We always emphasize recycling. And we're a believer in it. We've been running it about ten years now, BRC. And we've never had any formal complaints at that facility, and it's, and it's a very, very large facility. This facility is going to be extremely small, to be quite honest with you. So the waste will come in on a daily basis. It'll be loaded onto trucks or into containers to be shipped out. Our goal is long-term to use rail. The property is rail-served, again, by a local short line, the Canton Railroad. We plan on putting containers and shipping trash by rail, once we can get the right contracts in place. One of my slides, again, if you have it up there, is, shows some green train car at a overhead bridge on North Point Road. Those containers are full of trash. They come through Baltimore every day, twice a day, from, I believe, in the north, New Jersey or New York, on their way down south. And you'd never know that there's trash in those containers. There's four on each flatbed car, and that's the way we would ship waste by rail at this facility. We would fill the containers inside, and then when the trains came, we would take the empties off, take them inside, put the full ones on, and it would leave. That's our long-term goal. In the meantime, we would do some by truck, but long-term trucks are not the way to go. Again, I'm taking a lot of time, but again, it's very important who we are and that we care. And we understand all the issues very well to the community. And there's a great need for capacity in the marketplace. The general public doesn't know. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. For those of you that wish to provide written testimony during the hearing, you can do so by typing your comments into the host in the chat box. And comments will be read to the board members during the meeting. Please refer to the on-screen instructions for entering comments and proceed for speaking during the meeting. Speakers, will please remember to limit your comments to two minutes. Simon Owens, you're up next, please. Mr. Owens. Mr. Owens. Okay, Steve Lippi, please.
Nancy, I have unmuted the call-ins, so if you would just call their names once again.
Sure. Simon Owens, please. Mr. Owens. Marsha, are they on?
They are unmuted. I, I can't tell from the phone numbers exactly who it is, so I unmuted all of the call-ins and.
Okay, Mr. Lippi.
Can't hear him. He's talking, but we can't hear him.
They are speaking?
Steve's trying to talk. I can see his picture, but I can't, I can't hear him, so.
Maybe we can type in the chat? To let them know they're not being heard?
He can tell, yeah, I hear by his facial expression, see by his face that he hears us, but he, we can't hear him.
And who are you saying? Which one is speaking, Mr. Owens or Mr. Lippi?
Mr. Lippi.
Okay, let me try. This is why I love Zoom. So. What do we, under these circumstances?
I mean, we have the chat available. If anybody's having trouble with technical difficulties, they should be able to enter information in the chat if they'd like to.
Not a real efficient way to communicate.
Could he also try to call in?
I don't think he's aware that he's not being heard.
No, I think he's aware.
Very aware. He's shaking his head. He's aware.
Okay. Well, I, I can't see him.
Mr. Halepka, that was going to be my recommendation to, Mr. Lippi, if you go to where it says you're unmuted, there's an option that says switch audio. If you select that, it should give you an option to call in, and then your audio would be through your cell phone. Then we might be able to hear you.
Maybe you could put the, I don't know if y'all can hear me. This is Jack Hayden. Maybe you could put the phone number on the chat board. I'm not, I can't see it, but maybe you could put the phone number on there and they can call in.
Nancy, are there any other people that you want to move to until we?
There, there is, there's only a few people that signed up, so we know there isn't. I would have done that.
No problem. I just.
Nancy, it looks like he's trying to call in.
Yeah, it looks like he disconnected now, so maybe he's trying to come in.
We'll give him a moment. If not, Ms. Bensley, if there's any written comments, you can do that first, and then we'll let him speak.
No written comments to me at this time, Ms. Haferd. Ms. Tracy, do you see any to you?
No, I do not.
Okay, thank you. And I presume Mr. Owens isn't on either.
I don't see Mr. Owens, but.
This is Dave Lippi.
There you go. Thank you, Mr. Lippi. We have you.
Okay. Okay, fine. I'm not sure, you know, what happened on my end, so.
It's all good now.
Okay, I'll, I'll start. My name is Stephen Lippi, County President. I am a professional engineer and certified in solid waste management. I have been in the solid waste field for almost fifty years, of which forty years was with the county. To fit within two minutes, this testimony will be very condensed version of my written testimony, which will be submitted. The county has three county-owned and operated transfer stations, which are funded by the county's operating and capital budget. The total ready transfer capacity of these three is over one point two million tons per year. I have seven basic questions, one of which has been answered after listening to to the testimony, which should be considered before a decision is made. Number one, in the past, the county has not supported requests for private transfer stations as the counties believe that there was sufficient transfer capacity within the county with these three sites. What has occurred to change that decision? Two, since there appears to be more than four hundred fifty thousand tons per year of unused capacity at the at the three county transfer stations, is there truly a need for additional transferring capacity within the county? Three, would the operation of this proposed station adversely affect the operation of the three existing county stations? Four, if it were approved, would it set a precedent for future transfer station requests by other private companies, even though there is excess transfer capacity? And my fifth one, will this waste be transferred out of the region or out of state? And according to Jack, it will be most likely out of state by rail eventually. Six, due to proximity to Baltimore City, would this station benefit the city the most? And seven, is this proposed station compatible with the principal goals and actions of the draft 2030 County Master Plan? Thank you. And sorry about the problems.
That's okay. Thank you so much for being here. Mr. Keller. Thank you for your presentation. This item is tentatively scheduled for a vote on March 3, Planning Board meeting. At this time, we will adjourn our public hearing. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
Motion. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Please note that immediately following the public hearing, the planning board will be held a virtual CIP meeting to hear staff recommendation. We will all stay on the same wavelength. Thank you, everyone.
Ms. Hafford, I'm assuming you you I have completed my work. Is that correct?
Are there any questions for Mr. Keller?
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Keller.
Okay, so Crystal, shall we start?
Yeah, you're good to go.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. My name is Scott Halupka. I'm Chair of the Planning Board Committee on the Capital Improvement Budget and Program. I would like to acknowledge the committee members present with us this evening. When you hear your name, please say aye for the third time. Mr. Schweitzer.
Aye.
Mr. Johnson.
Aye.
Ms. Hafford.
Aye.
Ms. Panero.
Aye.
Ms. Wolfson.
Aye.
Mr. McGinnis.
Aye.
Mr. Heckman.
Aye.
Mr. Heinle.
Aye.
Mr. Perlo. I know you're there, Howard.
All right, I was, I'm here.
Mr. Warren.
Aye.
Mr. Caligari. Mr. Fotus. Mr. Ari.
Aye.
And Ms. German.
Aye.
Tonight, we are meeting in a work session to hear staff recommendations from the Department of Planning. After their presentation, members of the committee will have the opportunity to ask questions. I know that there are members of the community in attendance. This meeting has not been designed to accept comments from citizens. The Planning Board held a citizen input meeting on October 21 of last year, which was the opportunity for the board to hear from citizens on their issues concerning the capital improvement budget. I would now like to invite staff from the Department of Planning to begin their presentations.
Good evening, CIP Chair, Committee Chairman and members of the board. My name is Jen Meacham, and tonight the planning staff will review the capital budget for fiscal year 23 and the capital program for fiscal year 24 through 28. Staff has worked with the agencies to review the department budgets. We have found that the budget and the program funding amounts have not increased or decreased, nor have funding sources changed from the fiscal year 22 adopted budget, except to add funding in fiscal year 28. Funding in fiscal year 28 aligns with previous amounts requested in the budget program. Staff would now like to review projects that were commented on in the citizen input meeting in October of 2021. Agencies have provided feedback for these projects. Those departments with no projects mentioned in the citizen input meeting included 201 Sewers, 203 Water, 207 Bridge Bridges Culverts and Grade Separations, 208 Refuge Disposal, 209 Community College 217 Land Preservation, 218 Community Improvements, 220 Fire Department Buildings, 221 Waterway Improvement Fund, and 230 Police Department Buildings. If any specific questions about the budget and program for these departments may arise, staff can address those questions during open discussion. After this, citizen input meeting projects have been reviewed. We'll start an open discussion and a vote on staff recommendations can be made by the CIP committee. Chris Weaver will begin with Department 204 Storm Drains, followed by 213 Schools.
Hello, members of the planning board. For Department 204 Storm Drains, the Department of Public Works and Transportation has requested the same sources of funds and funding amounts per year for 2023 through 2027, as requested in last year's budget. DPWT has requested an amount of 6,850,000 for FY 2028, which aligns with the previous amounts requested in the budget program. Regarding citizen input meeting items for Bonita Avenue Flooding, DPWT discussed the conditions with Mr. Lorenz and numerous site visits were conducted in order to provide an incremental improvement, a drain system and receiving receiving channel was cleared of debris. Mr. Lorenz is asking for after the fact stormwater management facilities to offset the effects from upstream upstream developments that were constructed prior to stormwater management regulations. The after the fact development of stormwater management systems would be costly and require the acquisition of properties to construct facilities. For the county's PAI Development Plans Review Policy Manual, property owners should size the driveway covered culvert crossings to pass a 20 year storm event without overtopping and 100 year storm event with six inches overtopping. Regarding Turner Station Flooding, county has been aware of the reported flood conditions in Turner Station occurring over the decades. The area flooding is in an extreme low elevation and extreme high tides result in flooding. DPWT, it is DPWT's opinion that this issue would best be solved by strategic replete, that is, removal of flooded homes from the area. Another option would be construction of a New Orleans style levees and pumps pump station system. During last year's budget request, DPWT's tier request of 25 million for a levy pump station was not funded. For Powers Avenue Storm Drainage Issues, Powers Avenue is an open section road. Such roads serve as drainage venues for the surrounding lands in tandem with their attending drainage ditches to the extent they exist. Given the nature of open section drainage in heavy downpours, open section roads flood more often than their closed section, otherwise known as curb and gutter counterparts. DPWT is developing a tool that will rank all drainage issues and will look at all drainage infrastructure, roads included. Department is currently in pilot testing, the pilot testing phase of this new tool and hopes to have it available by the end of FY 22. For sustainability issues, regarding sustainability, storm drain projects enhance the resilience of infrastructure and natural features to promote long term sustainability, safeguarding of county assets and resources, and identifying and implementing strategies to address climate change and its current and potential impacts on the county. Storm drain projects support goal one of Baltimore County's Hazard Mitigation Plan by providing for conveyance of stormwater and the acquisition of flooded homes, which can help to strategically repeat retreat from areas prone to flooding, reducing human, environmental, social, and economic loss from natural hazards. Regarding equity, storm drain projects provide services for those vulnerable to the effects of stormwater. Our staff recommendation is that the planning board accept the budget as proposed for storm drains. For Department 213 Baltimore County Public Schools, Baltimore County Public School System has requested the same sources of funds and funding amounts per year for FY 2023 through 2027, as requested in last year's budget. ECPS has requested an amount of 200 million for FY 2028, which aligns with the previous amounts requested in the budget program. At the citizen input meeting, few major issues were brought up. One was that the Towson and Delaney High Schools replacement or renovation schools for the FY 2023 CIP submission. It reflects both schools as replacements, as approved by the Board of Education. For Millford Mill Academy, all classrooms in the facility have been air conditioned. Additional spaces within the school may be considered for air conditioning as additional funding becomes available. For sustainability, school building replacements, additions or renovations follow LEED Silver Design Standards, incorporating many methods to reduce greenhouse gas emissions, including geothermal energy. For the the newer Deer Park Elementary Replacement School, a net zero design has been included. Otherwise, electric transfer switches are installed in new and renovated buildings to accept future Maryland Emergency Management Agency generators for partial use of the building in case of disasters. For equity, the capital budget approval process includes a BOE public hearing, providing an opportunity for anyone in any segment of the community to provide input. The percentage of students receiving free and reduced meals in each school is considered in setting priorities for all projects. Improvements to the condition or capacity of school facilities supports more reliable delivery of instructional services for underserved and vulnerable populations. Specific segment of the community who benefits most from improvements are students who attend each school. Capacity relief may also be provided to neighboring schools. Additional capacity supports educational programs. It is our recommendation that the planning board accept the budget as proposed for the Baltimore County, Baltimore County Public Schools.
Okay, next is Miles Malberger, who will discuss Department 205 Streets and Highways, followed by Department 210 Government Buildings.
We had a problem hearing you, Jen.
Excuse me?
We had trouble hearing you.
Oh, did you? I'm sorry. Next is Miles Malberger, and he's gonna discuss 205 and 210, one is Streets and Highways, and the other is Government Buildings.
Good afternoon. For Department 205 Streets and Highways, the Department of Public Works Transportation has requested the same source of funds and funding streams per year for FY 23 through 27, as proposed in the previous CIP. DPWT has requested an amount of 44,575,000 for fiscal year 2028, which aligns with previous amounts requested in the budget program. Significant completed projects include Waltham Woods Sidewalk, North Point Road Sidewalk, Bloomsbury Crossing, final design plans, which are at 100% for to connect to the short line trail. Significant active projects include LED streetlight conversion, the Northeast Trail, completing design on the southern segment of the trail, the Patapsico Greenway from Elk Ridge to the Guinness Open Gate Brewery. Ossler Drive, Malt Sea Use Pass connects Cross Campus Drive to Stevenson Lane, safe routes to schools, and Edgemere installing curb and gutters and sidewalks near Edgemere Elementary School, and Liberty Road Beautification Project. Significant future projects include the Red Run Trail feasibility study connecting Red Run Trail to Owings Mills, the Six Bridges Trail feasibility study connecting Rodeberg Park to Stonely Elementary School, the West to East Trail Connection connecting Double Rock Park to Linover Park, the Torrey C. Brown NCR Trail Connection connects the current terminus of the Torrey C. Brown Trail to the Jones Falls Trail, the Bloomsbury Connection Project constructing the At Grade Crossing at Bloomsbury Ave. At the citizen input meeting, comments were given on Hamilton Avenue, which the comment was given that funding is to be requested. Bel Air Road, to which is, it's been replied that this is a state road and Baltimore County does not have jurisdiction over this project. Johnny Cake Road, to which was replied, the Department of Parking Racks must consider a building recreation center at Crosby and Rolling Road. DPWT plans to make repairs to the section of Johnny Cake in early fiscal year 2023. The lighting request specific to Security Boulevard from 6410 Security Boulevard heading eastbound towards Ingleside Ave. The section of the road is maintained by the State Highway Administration, and there's lighting contact for the State Highway Administration. Jim Flutka, whose number is 410-229-2373. For the Powers Ave, Powers Ave is an open section road. Such roads serves as drainage venues for the surrounding lands in tandem with the attending drainage ditches to the extent that they exist. Given the nature of the open section drainage in heavy downpours, open section roads flood more often than their closed section counterparts. They are developing a tool that will rank all drainage issues and look at all drainage infrastructure, roads included. They are currently in the pilot slash testing phase of this tool and hope to have it available by the end of fiscal year 2022. Morning Star Baptist Assex Road, there is pedestrian access at the road to make vehicular vehicular access would require a bridge. There is a stream currently, and would need a community involvement. This would require a minimum of three years and is not recommended at this time. Bicycle infrastructure improvements were requested and active projects to address issues and more funding has been requested. For the sustainability of their projects, improved connectivity and mobility throughout the walking and biking paths have been provided, as well as for equity connectivity provided to diverse neighborhoods, also serving seniors and people with disabilities. For this department, staff recommends that the planning board accept the budget as proposed for highway and roads. For Department 210 General Government Buildings, property management has requested the same sources of funds and funding streams per year for FY 23 through 27, as proposed in the previous CIPs. Aging, OIT, public libraries and property management have requested an amount of 28 million for fiscal year 2028, which aligns with the previous amounts requested in the budget program. Significant projects include the county building lighting retrofits, migrated solid waste processing system, which has been updated to the county EAM system, implementation of a system for the Department of Aging to track, monitor, refer and report on seniors. Library renovations include the Reicerstown Branch, Rosedale Branch, White Marsh Library parking lot repaving and restriping, and the Cockeysville Library wall damage repairs. Significant active projects include the Enterprise Human Capital and Financial Management System implementation, implementing a new enterprise human capital management and financial management system. The land use regulatory automation permits and inspections, implementing a comprehensive land use regulatory automation systems for the Department of Permits, Approvals and Inspections. The broader fiber fiscal year 2022, constructing fiber at additional county locations, replacing the public health record system, implementing a secure and highly configurable HIPAA compliant health record system for public health. Implementing the county EAM system, city works for the Department of of Waste and Transportation. NFIRS, the National Fire Incident Reporting System, used to document data from incidents and log trainings for the careers of volunteer fire service will reach the end of its life on December 31, 2022, and requires replacements, as well as additional library renovations, as mentioned earlier. Significant future projects include more library renovations for the branch parking lot refurbishments, as well as the Cockeysville and Perry Hall Library conversions to single service desk. The broadband fiber for fiscal year 23. Recreation in parks, participant registration and payment, implementing a public facing system to register residents for recreational activities. Asset management solutions, fleet management. Enterprise asset management, including the sign signals and stripings for DPWT. Case management for aging and disability implements additional functionality to the core functions of the system with my seniors center and allowing access to the center and senior centers. And the jail management system replacement, providing a newer upgraded software application to replace the current jail management system. At the citizen input meeting, brought up was the Bykota Senior Center. The community requested approximately 100,000 for renovations to the senior center and the Department of Aging Office, as well as for funds for more parking in a Towson Loop Shuttle Stop. A study was previously completed by property managements were being reviewed for implementation. for implementation and funding and has been requested for out years to update the study and fund the repairs. Additionally, a parking study is being requested in a future year. For the Jacksonville Senior Center, the community has requested a new senior center as the current center also operates as a regional center and which the response has been funds have been proposed for construction for twenty twenty-four and design plans are currently underway. For sustainability, the North County Senior Center will be constructed to LEED standards. Parking expansion at Cockeysville Senior Center will not impact current green space. The Reiserstown Branch of the Baltimore County Public Library will include EV charging stations and BCPL will use environmentally friendly materials in construction operation. And the Randalls Town Community Center, Hearnwood Landfill, Girroy facility and Parkton landfill will make use of solar energy sources. For equity, the libraries will include ADA access and furnishings, and community and senior center renovations provide updated equipment to minority rural and senior communities. Staff recommends that the planning board accept the budget as proposed for the general government buildings.
Smiles, next is Department two twelve. Parks Preservation and Greenways. So for Parks Preservation and Greenways, Rexon Parks has requested that the same source of funds and funding amounts per year for fiscal year twenty-three through twenty-seven as requested in last year's budget. Rexon Parks has requested an amount of seventeen nine five for fiscal year twenty-eight, which will align with previous amounts requested in the budget program. At the Citizen Input Meeting, the Essex Middle River Civic Council requested that the Victory Villa Community Center be replaced. They also asked for increased funding for parks and open space at La Farge and Martin's Lagoon. Rexon Parks is in the process of building a new community center in Middle River not far from Victory Villa at the Glenmar Elementary School rec site. It will be used not only for what's called PAL activities, but as a community center. A community center for Victory Villa itself is not in the current program. No funding has been scheduled for open space for La Farge and Martin's Lagoon at this time. But a Rosie the Riveter Memorial is proposed for development at a potential donated site in Wilson Point, helping to address the comment associated with the Essex improvements. The Hawthorne Civic Association requested that the county purchased two one one nine Eastern Boulevard, formerly a McDonald's restaurant, and turn it into a new community center. Rexon Parks does not believe the former McDonald's site is viable either to retrofit or to tear down or rebuild something. The Hawthorne Elementary School Rec Center is used for public recreation through a joint use agreement between the Rexon Parks and Board of Ed. That facility is available for community group use through Baltimore County Public Schools. For Johnny Cake Road improvements, it was asked to consider building a recreation center at Crosby and Rolling Road. A feasibility study and design funding is allocated within the fiscal year twenty-two budget for the prospective Western Hills Park Community Center, addressing this comment about Johnny Cake Road improvements. A Catonsville improvements comment mentions parks as a potential component of Spring Grove if redeveloped. There are no imminent plans to Rexon Parks knowledge for the redevelopment of Spring Grove or sale transfer of the portions of that property. There is thus no funding dedicated for park acquisition or development at that site. And for the pickleball courts, there was a need for dedicated indoor and outdoor pickleball courts in the county. Using tennis courts creates conflicts with the tennis players and limits the availability of both tennis and pickleball players. While the Rexon Parks Department is aware of the rapid growth in pickleball demand and participation, available court funding has been prioritized to renovate the county's extensive network of sports courts. In some circumstances, existing courts that are renovated may potentially be converted to dedicated pickleball courts. In their sustainability efforts for Rexon Parks, the LED light retrofitting program replaces old lighting technology with a more efficient energy technology that likewise reduces light pollution and green gas emissions. The manner in which most parks are developed with less impervious surface than most other types of land use provides environmental benefits to the surrounding communities. Additional parks significantly contribute to the community and human resilience. Trails and paths, particularly those that are part of an extended network, help to support resiliency and provide environmental benefits to the surrounding communities. For their equity evaluation, the Rexon Parks Department has embraced the expanded opportunities for public input that have arisen as a result of the administration's public outreach efforts. Widespread input is now obtained through such sources as town hall meetings, master plan and community corridor plan processes, and the land preservation park and rec plan process, which included an online user survey. Many of, many of park sites and projects, all of which are within the urdle, help to increase opportunities within vulnerable communities. Trail and paths, both by virtue of being free for use with the county parks, offer all residents an opportunity to partake of a recreational activity that requires no costly gear or equipment. So staff recommends that the planning board accept the budget as proposed for Rexon Parks. And let's see, okay. So that concludes our review of the departments that had comments at the Citizen Input Meeting. So in conclusion, the fiscal year twenty-three through twenty-eight capital improvement program and budget funding amounts have not increased or decreased, nor have funding sources changed from the fiscal year twenty-two adopted budget, except to add the funding in fiscal year twenty-eight. Staff recommends that you accept the budget as proposed. That concludes our presentation, and you can start your open discussion.
Thank you, Ms. Meacham and other members of the planning staff for your presentations.
Chairman. Scott, if I may, just for a moment. Yeah, thank you. It's the work by our staff, really, and I know you just thanked him, Scott, and I appreciate that. This is, takes a lot of analysis, and as I think all of you heard, and an important point of Jen Meacham's comments is that this is a two-year budget cycle. So the budget that was approved in for FY twenty-two also carries through to this one, which is FY twenty-three. That doesn't preclude any comments that any of you want to make or any changes or additions or deletions. And if you have such, certainly we welcome those recommendations and the discussion, but it is a two-year cycle that's, you know, just that's the way the budget always functions. So that's why I think as Jen and her team laid out, they're not seeing any changes from what was already proposed to you in the last capital budget presentation. So just as sort of a highlight, and once again, thanks to Jen, Miles and Chris for their work on this.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
For six years, I've been asking the county and the planning staff to address the needs in northern part of Baltimore County. Harford High School in the middle of that has got ten miles to north and east and west to find facilities. They can't walk down the street to find indoor facilities for the after-school activities. Each time in each of these hearings, I have requested that they recognize the need for additional indoor space at Harford High School to handle the expanding needs of the athletic and school population, after-school population, which has one of the largest after-school participation of any in the county. Also, there are grounds near the high school which a facility for recreation could put a facility also. But a facility at the high school could be used by both the community and the high school. And this has been ignored for six years now. And when we're talking about hundreds of millions of dollars to replace schools in closer to Lutherville and Towson and ignoring the needs for the rural areas, I think that they need to answer to this. We've been asking for this, and we don't have the facilities up there to meet the needs of the citizens. So that's my main statement.
Thank you, Mr. McGinnis. Anyone else have any comments or questions? Yes, Ms. Wolfson.
Um, yes, and I mean, maybe, maybe I'm ahead of this and don't understand the process as far as how these funds are applied to the capital budget. But I did ask the question last week and previously about the funding for the STEAM Center in Randalls Town that the county executive announced on April of last year, where he planned to utilize seven million dollars in state and local funds to support that construction of that building. I don't see it anywhere in the, I don't see seven million dollars anywhere in the budget, although we did find the funds to build two brand-new schools all of a sudden, so. And that's in the budget, so maybe somebody can tell me what's happening to the STEAM Center.
Was there anyone?
Jen Meacham may be able to address either one or both of those last comments.
Right, I think that we did reach out to Pat McDougal, and he said something back that it was in. I think we had sent you an email that it was in, I'm trying to.
I haven't received an email about that, if you're talking to me.
Okay. Because you reached out about this STEAM Center in Randalls Town. And he said it was in one of the budgets.
I think it's in the design stage, is that?
Yes, the design stage, and it was, it's in a group budget, so you don't see it individually in there, but it is in one of the group, like the group budgets, and I'm trying to see if I can find the email that he sent back to us, and I thought that I had forwarded that to you from him.
So Kathy, there are, there are categories that are bulk categories. And so you may see a bulk category, and it does not break out necessarily all of the commitments within that category. And so what Pat McDougal from Recreation and Parks is saying is it is in one of those bulk categories for the very initial ages of the design and engineering.
That address your question, Kathy?
Well, I mean, I'm looking at the budget for that, and I'm looking, well, where would it, what page would it be on in the Park and Recs budget?
So it was in their, in their agency template that they sent. I believe it had listed it in their agency template, and we tried to find that.
We'll find out, we'll get the exact bulk category for you, Kathy, and get back to you on that so we can more specifically identify it.
Okay, thank you.
Steve, can I get an answer on why our needs in the Harvard area are ignored each year?
I think that what the school board was saying was that right now their main focus is on getting seats and not adding extra gyms. So I think they're trying to focus on, on seats. Having enough seats.
Seats, you say? I can hardly hear you.
Seats, enough school seats for children.
Since a number of schools are overcapacity.
Now, I just remind them that when they redid the Harford High School, they, instead of spending a hundred million dollars, they spent under fifty million to redo it, and they ignored the fact, the need for additional gym space at that time. And they've been ignoring it ever since. Every new school has almost twice the gym space that Harford has.
And Mr. McGinnis, I thought I recalled that Mr. Blades made a comment about additional recreation spaces being made whether is at the facility that they're looking to build for senior center or somewhere else. And I know that Ms. Johnson also addressed additional acquisition of land, not necessarily for indoor recreation, but for other recreation opportunities in North County and.
About six miles south of Harford. And the block, it's not down the block.
Well, in all due respects, sir, hardly anything in North County is walkable within a block. And so that's very true in a lot of suburban areas as well. So providing facilities is daunting, as you know. And if that's not sufficient, then as you've done in other years, you may want to introduce a motion to recommend a change.
Yeah, I just think it's our needs up there because we are in a rural area that have not taken, been taken seriously, is my, is my point.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Scott. Yes, I guess I have two points. I remember during part of the presentation, and I don't remember which presentation, but we had talked about the Woodlawn Security Area getting a new senior center and youth center because they're in the same building and they're inadequate. And they had talked about looking for a space for that or putting it maybe where the police barracks were that they're rebuilding. I didn't hear that in the presentation, maybe I missed that, but I don't, I don't see that either in the presentation. Kathy, did you see that anywhere?
I thought that they showed the expansion of the Woodlawn Center in its current location. They were gonna make it two stories maybe and, and keep the same location, but enhance the location. Am I right about that?
That was my recollection, too.
I must have missed that, I apologize. And then the second one was, you know, there was a lot of conversation about waiting for a report that was going to come out on the best utilization of Towson and Delaney High School, and was it better to rebuild or replace? And there was also comment there that there were schools in the county that had greater need in that area over in Dundalk, and then in Sparrows Point, they were higher on that list. Any comments on that, like what happened there? It seems like that just happened and equity is supposed to be one of our key components that doesn't feel very equitable to me.
My understanding, and others can correct me if I've got it wrong, is that with the additional money from the state, they were able to move further down the list. So they, they, I mean, I remember this was your concern before, I don't think Towson or Delaney have jumped the list. They just have more resources, and they were always on, on the priority list, they were just a little further down. So I think they were just able to move further down the list to incorporate that, but others can correct me if I've got that wrong.
I don't see those improvements based on the presentation that was just made to those other schools. That's why I'm wondering, it seems like they were skipped over.
So let me build on what Scott just shared, Todd. One is that the school system did do a comparative between replacement and and renovation. And for each of the buildings, Delaney and Towson, there was a little bit less than a ten million dollar differential in the two. So they did, as the planning board requested last year, do a comparative analysis and presented a recommend, presented that data. And as Scott was correct, that until recently, when the county executive and the speaker and others were able to expand the pool essentially of dollars available to us, the governor, his credit committed a billion dollars in school construction funds. The county now has more resources in order to move ahead with a Delaney replacement. And also to look at that as a potential for Towson. The Towson dynamic is different because you have a historical building, a landmark building, so they have to address that as well as the MHT, Maryland Historical Trust concerns or issues. They are not supplanting the replacement at Lansdowne, nor the Southwest High School, excuse me, Southeast High School, nor the Northwest, Northeast High, Middle School demands. So none of the equity priorities. So none of the equity priorities that came through, through my I pass and the equity assessment are being displaced by the funding for Towson and Delaney.
So Steve, you're telling me those are being done also? Again, I'm not hearing that.
Yes, they are getting done, whether or not they happen simultaneously or sequentially, I don't know. The funding has been fully determined from the IAS, well, what used to be the IAC at the state level. But the executive sent a concurrence letter with the, with the school board's recommendations for two new schools. So that does not supplant or replace the other commitments based on the equitable assessment that Canon Design did and which you all heard. So it's in addition to, it's a supplement to, it's not a replacement of funds.
I, I would just like to know when that's gonna happen. It, it sounds, if something's done first, that's supplanting in my mind, so.
I hear you. I don't disagree. I don't disagree. And I, I don't know, and we'll try to get you a sense of the timetable for any of those. The state's money obviously has not yet been approved as part of this year's capital budget. So that money wouldn't be available until the beginning of FY '23. Whereas the other money for Lansdowne and also for the Northeast and the Nor, and the Southeast have already been committed, they're already in the budget.
And to add to what Mr. Lafferty is saying, I'm looking at the school's presentation showing their priority orders. Lansdowne for planning and funding is priority order five and six. Dundalk is seven and eight for planning and funding for an addition. The Northeast and Southeast are nine and 10, both for planning. And then below that at 11 and 12 and 13 and 14 are Towson and Delaney High Schools, both for replacement.
Which, as I recall, was sort of consistent with my past list that we saw a while back.
Yes.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
I have a, I guess it's more of a com, comment. It sure is nice to see after hearing years of requests from our seniors that in this budget, we actually are approving some real tangible improvements to our senior facilities. And I assume that I think it was almost 12 million last year was committed by the county executive towards improving senior facilities. I assume that's all in the budget now. Is that correct, Steve? Yes, that is, that is, Mark. Nothing's been changed. That's, as Jen Meacham pointed out, that's a consistent, consistent with last year's approved budget. Thank you.
Kathy, did you see the chat comment about your STEAM issue?
You're muted, Kathy.
You're muted, but.
Jen did just send me an email with a, a link that she had sent on the night and I was out of town and I'm sorry.
It's fine. I just wanted to make sure you saw, I saw it on the chat, so I just wanted to make sure you got it. Do any other board members have any questions, comments, concerns?
I, I guess my only last one was, I, I really think that we get great value out of the community college and just want to make sure that I put a word in that I, I think we need to make sure we fund that. It's just such a great asset to our community.
I would agree with you, and their, their presentations are always useful and, yeah, I think they do a great job. I will say one of the things that struck me this year was I think it's the first year I really heard a strong plea from the library system that you know, that the number of library buildings that are really starting to come to the end of their life cycle, I mean, I'll sort of steal Dr. Curtinitis' line that, you know, 50 is great age for a person, but a bad age for a building. And I think a number of our libraries are also at or beyond 50, so.
Scott, I agree with that, and I was amazed at what else they provide. I mean.
Oh, it's, yeah, I mean, libraries, many more, providing so many different, different services and programs. It's, it's amazing. So I think that's another, another unheralded county department.
And, and if I may, Scott, as was summarized, I think it was by Miles, there are significant number of library renovations that are in the, in the budget. Some basic stuff, interior renovations and, you know, like chiller plant upgrades and, and the whatnot, but it, it's really hard to, you know, when I know that the director talked about replacement for Towson, that's a, that's a whole different animal. But there are a lot of improvements because their whole programming has changed so dramatically, not only through the pandemic and COVID, but just recognizing the needs that so many families have that may not have been there five, six, eight, 10 years ago. The library system has really changed.
Yeah, I would agree. Other comments, suggestions? Do we have, I, I will now entertain a motion to accept staff recommendations unless the board has any further changes they would like to make to the motion.
I'll make a motion that we look to add funding for a gym in the North County.
Hallelujah.
No, it needs to be a second, not a hallelujah.
Do we have any discussion? I will do a roll call vote. So the motion is to, now, I, I believe the way we worded it before is that if there are additional funds to, if the county has additional funds to allocate, to consider allocating it for additional gym space at Harford High School. I have that correct?
Sounds like a great motion.
Just. This is Katie, just curious. It seems like, I'm still relatively new, but it seems like everything has to be studied. I mean, can we just allocate, have them ask to allocate extra funds? I mean, it's certainly the right time to ask for funding from the state right now, but doesn't there have to be much more involved?
I, you know, the, my impression, the way this has been, been done before is that, yes, there would have to be, you know, feasibility studies and whatnot, so we're just recommending that they, they kick off the process.
Okay. Uh, could you re, could you re, could, could you restate the motion?
Sure, I believe the, the motion is to, I don't know how to phrase it, to encourage the county, if there is additional capital improvement funds, to consider building additional recreational space at Harford High School.
I think.
Are, are we sure we want the motion to say that, I think we need to be a little clearer if we're supporting it or if we're supporting a consideration of it. And I think there is a, there was a balance between the two because while someone like me might be willing to hear that you want to have this conversation, I'm not ready to vote in support of it until I hear more about it.
I think, you know, two weeks ago, what was discussed about the gym was that schools do not have additional space right now. Or the existing school do not have enough space for the gyms. That is what I noted down when we, the last time that, that is who submitted was here, Dr. Williams.
Jen, do you have quick access to the prior transmittal letters from the, the planning board to the county council where I believe we've put this in before?
Yeah, I do, yep. Do you, do you want me to read, read that to you?
Yeah, could you, could you read what we, what we said in past years?
Okay, sure, um. Bring that up really quick. Okay. So it says, so the transmittal letter is where you're saying, kind of sending over all of the, all of the information and what you put for the additional gym at, at Harford High School study. The existing gymnasium at Harford High School may not be able to accommodate the needs of high schools' physical education program, nor the recreational needs of North County residents. A planning study is needed to determine if a second gymnasium is needed at Harford High School.
So is that, is that what we're voting on?
Uh, yeah, as you say, Mr. Warren, are you satisfied with that as, you know, statement?
Uh, yeah, I guess I can be okay with the study, but, you know, I, I I also am a believer in physical athletics and the ability to have that, or I probably wouldn't have been in college, so I've supported Mr. McGinnis on this for now, though I think the guy has put this in the last four or five times now, so yeah, I'll, I'll support it that way if we can get the votes.
Mr. McGinnis, you?
Scott, I, I, I recommend this as a former teacher at Harford High School and the parent of three children that participated in athletics, went on to play in college and grandchildren. So I think I have a pretty good knowledge of the situation there and the needs. So I just wanted to add that.
Okay. So unless there's further discussion, I'm gonna go ahead and do a roll call vote. Mr. Schweitzer.
Yay.
No?
No, I said yes, absolutely, yeah.
I, I wasn't, I wasn't sure, that's why I wanted to verify. Mr. Johnson.
Hi.
Ms. Hafford.
Hi.
Ms. Panero.
Hi.
Ms. Wolfson.
Hi.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. McGinnis.
Hi.
Mr. Heckman.
Hi.
Mr. Heinel.
Hi.
Mr. Perlo.
Hi.
Mr. Warren.
Hi.
Uh, Mr. Arie.
Hi.
And Ms. German.
Hi.
Motion carries. Do we have any other changes, recommendations we want to make in our transmittal letter?
I do think the gym should be named Wayne's Gym.
And I thank you, Scott.
I definitely will be at that opening and I definitely will recommend McGinnis Gym, yeah, Wayne McGinnis Gym.
Every Sunday evening, we're going over to Bel Air to play my grandson's basketball team, so I, I've been there, done that.
Um, I would now like a motion to, if there are no further comments, suggestions for the transmittal letter, I would entertain a motion to accept the additional staff recommendations.
Okay, Mr. Halepka. Any other questions?
I, I'm sorry, but can we make a motion to expedite the funding for the Diamond Ridge Park renovations?
Um, I think we can certainly make a motion to, you know, have that put in the transmittal letter.
It is. Thank you, it's dysfunctional totally in its current state.
So the, the motion is basically to try, as you said, to expedite the, the work done at, at that park. So.
I'll.
Give a motion in a second. Again, I will go do a roll call. Uh, Mr. Schweitzer.
Hi.
Mr. Johnson.
Hi.
Ms. Hafford.
Hi.
Ms. Panero.
Hi.
Ms. Wolfson.
Hi.
Mr. McGinnis.
Hi.
Mr. Heckman.
Hi.
Mr. Heinel.
Hi.
Mr. Perlo.
Hi.
Mr. Warren.
Hi.
Mr. Arie.
Hi.
And Ms. German.
Hi.
Thank you. Does anyone have anything else that they think we should be adding to the transmittal letters at this time?
Let it be remembered that Kathy and Wayne both got unanimous votes tonight in favor of their motions.
Thank you, Howard.
We'll put that in the transmittal.
Yes.
Do I have? Well, not hearing any additional motions, do I have a motion to accept the rest of the staff recommendations?
Motion.
I'll, I'll read the motion. And Ms. Meacham, will you add the additional changes at the end of the motion, please?
Sure, yep.
Thank you. Be it moved that the Baltimore County Planning Board Committee on the Capital Budget and Program accept the staff's recommendation for the WiFi 2023 Capital Budget program for FY 2024 dash 2028 with the additional changes. Additions, with the additional additions.
Do I have a second?
Hi.
Thank you. Final roll call vote. Mr. Schweitzer.
Hi.
Mr. Johnson.
Hi.
Ms. Hafford.
Hi.
Ms. Panero. She's left us with a, Ms. Wolfson.
Hi.
Mr. McGinnis.
Hi.
Mr. Heckman.
Hi.
Mr. Heinel.
Hi.
Mr. Perlo.
Hi.
Mr. Warren.
Hi.
Mr. Arie.
Hi.
And Ms. Johnson, I mean, Ms. German, sorry.
Hi.
Thank you. This concludes the work session of the Planning Board Committee on the Capital Improvement Budget and Program. The final vote on the Capital Improvement Program will be scheduled for Thursday, March 3rd, at a regular planning board meeting. Information for the upcoming meetings can be found on the Planning Board's webpage. I want to thank both the board members and planning staff for attending tonight. This meeting is hereby adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Kathy, can you stay on for one minute?
Sure.
I'm worried that way, Todd.
Oh, you'll have to call me.
Can you call me? I have your number, you have mine?
No.
I'll give it to you.